We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the August 4th Board of Trustees, MISD's special meeting at the MISD Education Support Center at 6 o'clock. The first thing that we're going to do is call the, say, the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everybody will please stand up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We do have one comment to the board. The one thing I would ask is if you could please keep your comment to five minutes. We're going to, the board can't react to your comment at all whether we agree with it or not. If we don't agree with you, or we do, we can't respond. So with that, if April Hagan could come up, please?
Good evening. I think I'll go first. My name is April Hagan. My husband and I have two girls who are in grade seven, 10, and 12th in MISD, and I'm also a teacher in MISD. First of all, despite the very trying circumstances that our country and our community is in, I'm very thankful that we're part of Montgomery ISD, and I wouldn't wish to be anywhere else. We made an intentional move here two years ago, and we've never regretted it. We believe we're in the right place at the right school district, and I'm honored to be a teacher in this district. I want to thank each of you for your commitment and the hard decisions that are before you that you have to continually make, especially during this time. I would just like to express my opinion. I feel like I stay pretty silent. I don't post a lot. I've never done this before, but I feel like if I don't express my opinion, then I give up my right to have a voice by not using it, and that's why I'm here today. I feel very strongly that we need to get back to in-person schooling as soon as we possibly can. I believe for many reasons. One, it's the best thing for families in general. I have a parent from last year that has reached out to me. She's a single mom. She works in the medical field. She has an 11-year-old with special needs and a seven-year-old that are not able to manage at home. She can't afford to pay someone to do it, and she has no family here. So she's faced with the decision of, do I go to work and keep a head, you know, a roof over their heads and feed them, or do I support them educationally? And she wants to do both, but there are not, simply not enough hours in the day for her to do that. And I think she's not alone in that. I think that there's a lot of students, I have some that were in my class last year, whose parents are doing the best job they can with the tools that they're equipped with as parents, but their toolbox is sometimes lacking. And we put kids at home with them for this unexpected time, and everyone, we all had to do that. But I feel like the, many parents, good or indifferent parents, they have a light at the end of the tunnel that come August, that things would go back to normal, whatever that can be, and that they could, they had that, and that kind of rug was pulled out from underneath their feet. And I'm not making a judgment that we did wrong or why. I think we had to make a decision, you had to make a decision when you did, about how to start the year. But I feel like there's kids who are in unsafe environments at home and situations, and parents are high-stress right now, having to make hard decisions, as I described before with the other mom, and it's not a good situation for a lot of students. I've been a stay-at-home mom for many years, but I have a number of years of teaching in my background, and I know I've taught students before that their only safe place was at school, and the only food they were receiving was from the school. And I know we have those students in MISD, and I think that has to be a consideration. As a teacher, I will tell you, I will leave it all, I'll leave it all on the line. I will do everything I can to be the best teacher I can be in any circumstance, virtually, in person, whatever. I'll have a good attitude. I love this district. I love teaching. I'm going to do all that I can, but I, in my heart of hearts, do not believe that we can give the same education to students virtually that we can face-to-face, even if it's with a mask, or a shield, or socially distanced. Those kids need to see my face. They need to hear my voice. They need to know I love them and I care about them. I'm invested in them, and I can't communicate that as effectively virtually as I can when I'm standing in the same room with a student. And those kids need that. They need teachers, and Montgomery is full of teachers that feel that way, but we have to be, I believe we need to be in the presence of the student to best communicate to them and best educate them. You know, there's lots of talk about the emotional toll and the suicide rates and all of that, and, you know, I think that's true. I think that we're not built for isolation. We're built for community, and I think that we need that, and our kids need that for emotional reasons as well. Another reason is because if I felt like doing in-person school, the result of that is that families were really self-isolating and quarantining and doing what they needed to do and being home, but that's not happening. Our community, you can go anywhere in our community, and you cannot tell by a parking lot, or the people in a business, or the traffic, that we are anywhere, any different than we were in February. So people are not staying home, and not having school in person is not going to keep them home. Okay, my closing up. My girls, I was going to have them all be here, but Leah, because she just came from the horse ranch where she's been volunteering, so she looks a hot mess. My other girls are at volleyball right now. But Leah, what do you want to do this year? Putting you on the spot. She wants to go to school, and I know there's inherent risk, and I know that we have the liability of the district, and I know there's hard decisions, and I trust your judgment. You were voted into position to make the best decision considering all the factors, but I just want you to know, I don't think I'm alone in how I feel as a parent. I don't think I'm alone as how I feel as a teacher. I trust you to make the decision that's best for our district. I just pray that we can get back to having those kids in our presence so we can really do the job we're meant to do as soon as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're going to go ahead and go into our first agenda item, considering the approval of operational connectivity inter-local acquisition agreement with Region Four.
Thank you, Mr. Dossi. This is a continuation of the action that this board took at the last board meeting. If you remember, you were presented with a request by staff for a purchase of $500,000 for devices and hotspots. You're here in a moment as we start talking about changes to our reopening plan. Those devices and hotspots are desperately needed, but after you took action, which we were very grateful for, we found out that we were directed by TEA that part of how we can recoup some of that cost, as we said, up to half, we have to join an interlocal agreement. And so those directions came after the vote, and so we have to join that interlocal agreement before August the 4th, which is tonight. So if the board is willing to accept our joining the interlocal agreement, we will get everything done, and then not only will we get the devices and the hotspots, but then we will also be able to get reimbursed for a sizable portion of that $500,000.
Does any of the board have any questions about that? So it is a reimbursement of the cost, or is it just a reduced cost? How does that work?
Well, Lisa, what is, Ms. Busby, if you'd like to join in, but right now it is a reimbursement of that cost, up to half.
Yeah, so we will not actually have to pay the full price upfront. TEA commits to their half, and they invoice us for our half.
Okay, makes sense. How long, if we need to purchase additional devices, are we still able to utilize this? Or is it?
It's a one-time offer. Potentially, we could purchase further devices and hotspots at a reduced cost, but the, having TEA reimburse us for a portion of it would only be through this one-time opportunity.
So I guess the question is, is $500,000 that we approved last week, last couple weeks enough?
It's not enough for the needs of our district, but it's the full amount that we could request.
So we can't go higher than that?
Not to be reimbursed. Potentially, we could do more. What's interesting is, the other question I'm sure you're going to be asking is, when are we going to get these things? Best case, in October, potentially even after that. But what we're doing right now is we are inventorying the total need for hotspots, connectivity, and devices, and then we'll be a lot more strategic in terms of future needs. But for right now, this will allow us to continue if, in fact, we have to go remote virtual again, and those devices and connectivity are going to be needed further in the school year, even if we have no further interruption of instruction.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve the signing of interlocal agreement with Region Four so that we can purchase devices through the Operation Connectivity Bulk Order Program.
David has a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that was the only action item that we have tonight. I think everybody is here for the second item here on the list, which is a report on the phased reopening of schools.
Thank you. At the last board meeting, staff under your interim superintendent presented our reopening plans, and I appreciate the comments that you heard tonight. They're comments I've heard since becoming the lone finalists and then your superintendent. And I think it is absolutely unequivocable that the vast majority, and you're actually here, the latest from our most recent survey, that there is a desire for us to return to school as quickly as possible. What we pledged that night as we presented the initial reopening plan was, please remember a phrase, "subject to change," and that as we could get further guidelines from all the individuals and agencies that give us guidelines and direction in terms of public education, that we would be responsible and thoughtful, always keeping the safety of our students and staff top of mind, but that we would try to be proactive rather than reactive and think about every opportunity to thoughtfully welcome and reintroduce students back onto our campuses. Our staff has been working very diligently, especially with our 10 campus principals. As a matter of fact, there was a rumor last night that there was a new Zoom meeting with our six elementary principals and their assistant superintendent, which went way into the night, planning for how to do what we're calling a phased reopening. So what we want to remind you is, the initial proposal to the board was that we were going to follow the direction and the request of the Montgomery Health Department and be very much aligned to the other school districts in Montgomery County, and that overall, it would be three weeks of remote learning with the ability to have some populations of students come back to campus. And so what we suggested that night was that we would look at potentially some of our special education students, but that we would think about, were there other groups of students that we could bring back onto campus for very valid reasons sooner than September the 8th? And so what you're going to hear tonight is our latest thinking about what we're calling our phased opening of schools. Mr. Ergle commented it was a soft opening, and I like that, but I promise you, there's nothing soft about it. There's a lot of planning that goes into this, again, with the keeping of our safety, of our students and staff top of mind. So we're going to share with you what we are doing in terms of phases, and I would ask Mr. McFadden and Ms. Graves to join us up at the podium, and we're going to talk about the instructional program, then we're going to talk about our special education population. So Ms. Ergle, if you'd like to join us as well. And then we're going to give you some of the latest guidance in terms of some of the rule changes that have come down from TEA, and I promise you, the information we sent you yesterday actually changed an hour and a half ago, so what you will see is the most updated information, and after our board meeting tonight, this will be communicated to our community, and it will be all updated and available on our website. So, Ms. Graves?
All right, so when we started thinking about our elementary population and which students we're going to meet most for coming back early, we really leaned heavily towards our pre-K and K kids. They've never been at school, so we're asking them to come on a routine, also come learn a safety routine, wearing a gift, encouraging, highly encouraging them to wear masks and following a lot of different protocols that we would normally follow. We also felt like this is a good population. We, they're young, and we felt like this was the target, this was the target group. And working with the principals, the consensus from most of the teachers, or a lot of the teachers, I don't know that it would be all of them, but they were very excited. You can imagine how difficult it is to have remote learning for pre-K and K. They do like devices, but they don't always stay as focused as we would like them to. So we would like to recommend that our pre-K and K students come back August 17th. So we would spend August 13th and 14th, we would of course do our remote learning on those two days. Those would be just welcome videos with the parents. We're also going to schedule through sign-off genius with very small numbers for those two days, an opportunity for one parent and the child to come in and meet the teacher. We are going to send out all the protocols. You have to wear masks, you have to sign off, that you have checked to make sure you do not have any symptoms. We're going to allow that parent to bring their child, since it's their first trip to elementary school, to look at the school, to meet their teacher, and see their classroom. And so we will be doing some remote things on the 13th and 14th. We're going to invite them back on the 17th. Of course, we will have some of the students that will opt for remote learning as well, so we will have to have remote ready to go at that time for those students. Ms. Ergle is going to talk to you about special education. We are entering the elementary spend that on the 17th as well. Our faculty students will start with us on the 13th. We have a plan for them as well, so that the parent has, the teacher has time to work with their students. And then students without internet access. On our survey, we had about 374 students, I think that's right, that said that they did not have internet access. But we also had around 2,200 students that didn't answer the survey that we're having to get in touch with. So this is, if you hear any principals or office staff talk about how busy they have been, this is what they've been doing. We're trying to make sure that we get, that we're able to contact every parent to make sure that we don't leave anyone out to understand how they would like to proceed. Those without internet access. We know that we do not have enough computers in the hotspots to meet all of our needs right now. We are working to make sure we only issue one computer per family. A lot of our families have requested multiple computers because of their experience. In the spring, they thought they could do with one computer, and they found that it was very difficult, because they might be working from a computer, and if they had a couple more kids working, if they were working from a computer, it was difficult. So we are working to narrow down the list, to hopefully get out a laptop to those that need a laptop. But those without internet access, we do not have hotspots to give them right now. So we have invited them to join us for half a day, August 17th through September 4th. They will not be going necessarily to their current teacher's classroom. They will probably be working in a lab-type setting, and their teachers can come in and meet them and talk to them and that sort of thing. But our really, early option is to get them to school, because we do not have those hotspots available. I would say that we're probably going to have some of those that are just going to say, hey, I don't have internet access, but I don't feel comfortable coming to school, and we probably are going to have to look at another option for them, maybe a paper packet. We don't feel that the paper packets are our best option, but that may be something that we need to provide for those students. So that is a small group that's going to come half a day, and we're looking forward to that for coming. And then, of course, our students who have been identified with dyslexia, our goal is to look at where they are in their programming and make a decision on how to come in. If they come in and we find out we're blocked, we're going to try to work through our nine house program. We're really looking at the students that are close to exiting, because if we can get those in and exit them, they're, I mean, they're close to being finished, it would be a bonus for them. We will also continue to provide remote instruction for all dyslexic students. So that is our plan kind of in a whole for elementary. Is there any, do you think you can clarify a few of those groups of students?
Secondary's going to be very similar to that, but one major difference is we're not going to bring any students other than our special groups, our special education students, our students without internet access, back to school except for the third week. We're going to, we feel like there's many more opportunities since our kids change classes, and they're in large groups. A lot of times, there's a lot of social interaction, no matter how much we're trying to train them and to encourage masks, you know, the required to wear a mask. But we feel like there's an opportunity for us to have to possibly switch to remote learning a lot more often, maybe not at all, but we want to prepare for the worst-case scenario. So we felt like, after meeting with our campus principals, that since we're changing to a block schedule, we're doing a lot of changes to our schedule internally, that it would be best to get a good start with every single teacher in remote learning, because it could be one teacher that has to flip to remote learning if their class is exposed for some reason and have to go home for 10 or 14 days at a time. And so we want every teacher to have a really good handle on remote learning before we bring back students. And then we thought a lot about which students to bring back on each campus, and it made perfect sense to bring back sixth graders and ninth graders for a week prior to any other students coming back, any other grade level students coming back. And then we come back for a week, and the reason for this is they're brand-new to our buildings. They're brand-new to the junior high, they're brand-new to the high school, and this gives us an opportunity to run almost like a fish camp, where we can run an orientation to the building, find your classes, and we can do all this without 800 other students being on campus with them. So they'll get a real opportunity to learn the traditions of the high schools and the junior highs, and to figure out their schedules, figure out which hallways go up, which hallways go down, the pathways in the building, because it's going to be new for all kids, but it's really going to be new for our sixth graders and our ninth graders in those situations. So we felt we had a real opportunity to go through our, to test our procedures as well, our lunch procedures. All of our procedures are new because we're spreading kids out and we're trying to socially distance kids in a very tough environment, to socially distance kids. So we chose six and nine. We're going to bring them back the week before the September 8th date, and then, of course, on September 8th, all students will arrive, just like on a normal school day. Remote learning will continue for each student that does not want to come back to campus for whatever reason. And then students that want to switch back and forth, we talked about that in our initial plan, they'll have to wait for their grading period to end before they can make a decision to go back to in-school or back to remote, depending on which choice they make in our survey that's going to be coming out on, I believe, the 19th is when we're going to release the survey, to figure out when they want to come back. We're also bringing back special education students, and Ms. Ergle's going to talk about that, and dyslexic students as well. So that's basically the difference, is we're bringing back six and nine the third week, and really hitting remote hard with every teacher in every building, every secondary building, so that if we do have to switch, it should go pretty seamlessly, hopefully.
Okay, yes, so moving into special education, of course, everything for elementary and secondary applies for our students receiving specialized services. We're looking at those students specifically that receive an alternate curriculum, so they're not having access to the same curriculum as their same age years. It's an alternate curriculum, very specialized instruction that really is best presented in person. They also, the students that we've invited are accessing multiple services, so maybe that's occupational therapy, physical therapy, orientation mobility. They need those socialization skills as far as their individual plan that they each operate on. So the plan that I had is on that 13th and 14th, our first two days of school, it will be virtual instruction and connections with parents, to make sure that we understand, are there any new updates that you want to share in terms of stop virtual until now? Any updates with our outside therapies? Anything we need to know about new behaviors or anything we can anticipate, so we can best support? We also really just want to get them excited about coming back, and it can be very scary, and they have a lot of time just sitting down with their family and not with their friends and peers. Change can be very difficult for some of our students, depending on their needs. So that would be the intent of the first two days of school, where they will be learning virtually. But then Monday, the 17th, we will invite that smaller for students to access that alternate curriculum and the related services that they need to come onto campus for the full day, so that that way we can provide speech services, again, those other related services I mentioned. We've got that full day, we can help fill in some gaps. Unfortunately, not all of our students participated in extended school year services, so that's summer school kind of, to extend the learning of their IEPs. We didn't have as many purchase papers, it was a commercial at that time. So having them that full day, we can really build up where we left off and hopefully fill in some gaps, and really teach that transition of what it means to come back to school now, because how they left school and what they're coming back to could look very different. So that's the intent of transitioning that particular group back. As far as side of four services, they will continue as they did in the spring, a little bit more pointed this time, and of course, we're having a daily contact with all teachers, so that will be more beneficial for all of our students. And the speech and dyslexia, you heard a little bit about dyslexia, and again, meetings are continually happening. There's one tomorrow specific to dyslexia, so I don't know details. Speech will be the same. If students happen to be on campus without alternate curriculum and they also receive speech services, we would provide those while they're there. Those that will not be on campus during those particular times will be invited to access their programming and their supports unless they choose to do so via Zoom or teletherapy as we did in the spring. And then, of course, campuses continue to work individually, send individual phone calls, making these plans, making sure parents understand what we're offering. If they're not on special transportation, then we need to look at, what's your plan to get your student to school? We're talking through that with each family. Questions about special education? It's a lot in this area.
Okay, they mentioned this a little bit earlier, just a little bit, but just so you know, our survey that we sent out, here are some of the results from that. We had 6,820 responses. That's out of approximately 9,000 students that we have, so like she said, we were missing some students that we had to reach out to, to get their answers, but of those responses, we had 373 that said they did not have internet. And then we also had this request of 1,833 laptop requests. That was much higher than anticipated, because we checked out probably 500 and something in the spring, so this is over three times as much as what was asked for in the spring, and we didn't even get all of our responses back. So it was probably more like four times the need is what was out there. So that presented some other challenges, which we'll talk about some solutions in just a minute for that. But then the other question that I know you probably want to know the answer to is, what did they choose? Because we asked a soft question. It was not a commitment. We just said, right now, how are you thinking about the return date of which way you would go? And we had 81% that say they plan to choose traditional in-person learning at this time. We have additional laptops ordered, and of course, we have this bulk order agreement that we have signed into right now, so we anticipate getting those. The laptops that we ordered, we even had campuses that ordered laptops in anticipation of needs in May, but with the backorder across the state, they haven't even received those that we've reviewed in May yet. So that's contributed to some of our situation as well, too. And again, hotspots have been requested as part of this bulk order, so we will eventually get to a place where we could service those needs. We're just not quite there yet, because those orders, they have told us will take somewhere between, they gave us a large window, four to 10 weeks. So it'd be great if it came in the four weeks, but I don't anticipate that. It's probably going to be closer to the 10 weeks. So in the meantime, our current solution for that is that we did go back on our website, and one of the adjustments we made was to our instructional hours to make sure parents understood that we are flexible on those instructional hours. It would be great if they could participate and get their instruction in between 8:00 to 4:00 and turn in their assignments, but we recognize that we do have parents that work during the day, and they might have to help their students at night. So as long as they just get it in before the end of that day, they're going to be counted present for that work and given credit for that work that they're done. So hopefully allowing that flexibility will then allow families, as in the next bullet says, to share those laptops in their homes. So we are requesting that families share as much as possible. And then as the inventory arrives, if there is still a need, then we'll start to distribute to meet the needs of those that still need it. And then, as she mentioned, we're also offering those AM and PM sessions, half-day sessions, so that if they do want to come and use a lab to access the so that if they do want to come and use a lab to access the remote learning, we will have an option for that. Now, that does have to be scheduled with the campus and registered for, so it's not just show up and use the lab, so it would be something that the campuses are reaching out and scheduling with those students who need it.
Can you share a little bit about the passcode distribution that started happening today?
Absolutely, yes. So with it being full remote, one of the things is you have to be able to log into your accounts. And since we don't have students on campus with us, and that was kind of another challenge, a piece of the puzzle that we had to figure out. So as campuses are distributing schedules, and each campus is doing that a little differently, like the secondaries, I think, are having a drive-by pickup of their schedules, elementaries have some other ways. If you haven't heard from your campuses yet, you'll be hearing from them soon on how to do that. When you pick that up, they will have the username and the password for their accounts on there. And as we mentioned before, we're using ClassLink, so that'll be one place for them to go and log in using that username and password that's, that's given on there. It should also include a link for a how-to video, that this is how you log in the first time with your username and password. We're also going to, on the website that we shared with you the first time, the last time, the last meeting, there's going to be an additional tab on there that says Parent Training Resources, and so that video will be the first video that gets added to that on just how do I get logged in, so they can view that video for help as well.
Dr. Busby, I have a question. If a person gets a laptop, they check out a laptop, when do they have to return it? Is it at the end of that three weeks? Do they get to keep it past that, or?
So, you know what, that's a great question, and one we quite, really haven't said, a hard decision on, this is how we're going to do it. I would anticipate that at the end of this remote period of time, if they have chosen traditional, then they should return that laptop at that time. And then at that point, we would just supply the laptop for those who have chosen remote learning and need the device.
Thank you.
Good evening. I apologize that you didn't be seen tonight. I'm going to try and cover some of the health protocol information for Mr. Morris, since he was unable to be here. But he's done a fantastic job in keeping Dr. Morrison and the team updated on all of the guidance that appears to consistently change from TEA and other entities. So tonight, I wanted to take just a couple of minutes, talk about some updated guidance that we received even as late as 3 o'clock this afternoon. Some of these guidance changed. And so we're going to talk just briefly about fever, early return to work requirements, close contact, and some changes in the symptoms. Also, as we are, as our employees are starting to return to work, we are having communications with them about potential issues, whether it be exposure or an employee who tests positive. And so we've pushed out some, some flow charts to our campus principals and our directors and other administrators to help guide them through those processes and those situations as they arise. So the first thing that we're going to look at is the, the public health planning guidance. Once again, Mr. Morris has put this together as a summary document from some guidance that we've received from, from TEA, and there have been a couple of changes, and we've highlighted those in yellow for you. Under the confirmed and suspected cases area, one change was that now an employee can return when they meet three criteria, and the first one being they have to have been fever-free for 24 hours without the use of fever-reducing medication. Previously, that guidance was 72 hours, so that's been lowered down to 24. Under section three there in that same column, individuals with symptoms that could be COVID but who have not been lab-confirmed at this time, but they want to return to school before completing the mandatory stay-at-home period, there's two requirements that they have to meet in order to do that. There was a change to section B of that guidance that requires that they obtain an acute infection test at an approved testing location that comes back negative for COVID-19. Previously, they were required to take two tests at least 24 hours apart and get two negative results. Now the guidance is just one, okay? A large change that happened again today, there seems to be a lot of back and forth about what's the definition of close contact. And so TEA is trying to, as much as possible, align with CDC guidelines, and they found out that in their research, there was even some confusion between some of the CDC guidelines, and so that's contributed to some of this back and forth. But today, the discussion was, especially on item B, being within six feet for a cumulative duration of 15 minutes. However, you can consider additional factors like case, contact, masking. So that puts us back towards the original guidance where if you're in a six-foot space, both people have a mask, you should be generally, that should be acceptable, okay? So it kind of ref, narrowed some of that guidance down again. The other major change today was some of the definition of the symptoms. They had summarized some of the symptoms before, and then today they kind of expounded upon those symptoms again. And so in the lower right-hand corner, you see the, the current symptoms, and their guidance was if someone has recently started experiencing any of these following symptoms in a way that is not normal for them, okay? And one change that they did was also regarding the fever. The previous guidance was 100.4 degrees or higher, they have now lowered that to a flat 100 degrees is the symptom for fever. So just a real quick update on some of the guidance from TEA. Once again, Mr. Morris deserves all the credit for this document. He spent a lot of time researching and putting this together.
Lynn, if we could just go back to the previous document, one thing for the board and for our community, I think we said this at the last board meeting, there's repeating again, all of this is subject to change. Again, you will all receive different information than we're presenting tonight slightly, but we will post every change as soon as we can on our website, so that will be the single source of truth on the link that Ms. Busby directed. And then also, the date is very important, because if, if you've printed one of these charts and then that's what you're using, you can refer to the date and make sure that you have the most updated information. And that's something our campus-level principals are being very cognizant of, because they're printing these things, and then we have to let them know that they have changed based on TEA guidance.
And so this is, this is one of the flow charts that we're using to help our, our administration and our employees. This is a response to an employee who has been exposed to COVID-19. And once again, this chart has a date on it, and it was July the 29th, and so in COVID terms, that should have been two years ago, because it's already changed, changed today. And so this flow chart will have to be updated. But on this chart, it helps our administrators, because everything is color-coded, okay? The orange sections are the employees' obligations, so when they're exposed, they need to self-quarantine for 14 days from the last date of exposure. They need to complete the FF-CRA leave request forms, which are available on the district's website and through our benefits department. And then they also need to keep us informed of their health status, any testing results, and follow-up with any required return-to-work criteria. The green section is for our employer obligations, and so that way, that helps our administrators know exactly what they need to do in those situations. And then the gold section on the left is some sample criteria for return to work. So once again, this is just one of the tools that we're providing to help our administrators.
Is this, I'm sorry, is this from TASB?
This is from TASB, yes, sir. And so that's what we're using them as our guiding source for employee-related issues.
The first chart was our own, that was from Bobby.
The first chart was a chart that Mr. Morris made based on the TEA guidance that they put out and updated periodically. This is also, once again, a TASB flow chart, and this is for an employee who is exhibiting symptoms or who has a diagnosis of COVID-19. And so once again, it's color-coded to help easily understand who needs to do what. We just wanted to show it to you tonight, just to show you some of the tools that we're putting out there. Once again, it was dated July the 29th, and so it will be updated after the changes today for the CEAs.
I think the term "easily understood" in, in the world of COVID and bringing kids back is immensely complicated, and one of the things that we did this week is we created a rapid response COVID, rapid response team, made up of different leaders across the district with obligations and responsibilities, so that when a campus principal is confronted with a question or situation or issue, be it from a parent, a teacher, support staff, or student, they immediately can go to the person on the COVID Rapid Response Team, and then we will work very quickly, very diligently to get the right information, and if we don't have that answer, we will be able to access TEA, legal representation, TASB, whoever we need to, to make sure we're getting the right answer to the campus as quickly as possible. And then what's going to be really important is that situation, because there is no playbook for this, and so it's very possible that we will be uncovering a question that other school districts across Texas or the states may be confronting as well, so we will get our answer, we'll distribute it to the other nine campuses, and then work with TEA to make sure that that guidance that we may have learned is being shared the same way that other school districts will be confronted with situations, and then that way, we'll try to be proactive rather than reactive.
And then this is just a draft chart that outlines some, some guidance for our campuses on student situations that may arise, and this is a locally developed chart. So we've taken some input from some other school districts and kind of modified it to, to fit Montgomery ISD's needs, but this helps the administrators know if a student has been exposed or if a student is positive, what courses of action need to be taken. And down at the bottom, it talks about action items, who needs to be notified in those situations, what type of letters need to go out. And so this is, once again, just an example of a tool that we're pushing out there for our campus and department administrators.
One question that I had, it seems from the, from the documents that the response is if we have a kid that's in the class and he, he or she is COVID-positive, really it's an, it's an analysis of the students that are, that have this close contact with them, we're not going to automatically shut down the whole class or automatically shut down the school or something like that.
Yeah, so that's why the ever-changing guidelines and requirements create lots of complications, because it creates processes and systems we need to revisit, it creates processing systems and logistics that the campuses need to change. I think what's really important for our parents to understand is that once we learn of a, of a positive COVID case, whether it's with a employee or a student, the first thing that's going to have to happen is an investigation of close contact and contact tracing, and so who potentially was exposed, who would fall in that definition of close contact, and then we'll determine, you know, what are the appropriate next steps. What I want to give our, our parents especially a sense of comfort is, is that there will be two communications that will come from the school. The first that will proceed, the second. The first will be to inform you that we did have a COVID-positive test and that your child may have been potentially exposed, and so therefore, there's a set of requirements and things that we're going to need to do. That will be the first communication. The second communication will be a letter, a communication that will go to the entire school to let everyone on the campus know that there was a COVID-positive case, but a sense of comfort that if you have not already been contacted, we want you to be aware that there was a COVID-positive test, but that if your child was potentially in close contact, you will have already been informed. So, you know, that is the plan, and it's really important that one communication go before the other, but what's going to have to proceed all of that is an investigation with the campus, taking the lead, we'll provide appropriate support, then we'll work with the campus to do the appropriate notifications, always keeping safety of our students and staff top of mind.
I got a question, the slide that had the yellow updated changes, I don't know if we want to go back or not, but so if an employee has a cold, has 100-degree temperature on day one, they go home, next day they feel better, can they not return to work for nine more days following that?
Chris, if you'd like to come up in case I bungle this, but I'll do my best offer here. I think one of the changes, if we can go back to actually the first chart, I think is a little bit more clear, keep on going, right here. These constantly change, and so I think one of the changes that was very appropriate was there are students and staff who sometimes exhibit other health issues that might have some of these in there, but they know that they are in fact due to other health issues that the employee or student may be exhibiting. So what's important is, is that differentiating COVID symptoms versus medical symptoms that I know because of medical conditions I may be experiencing temporarily or that I'm living with for longer than a temporary situation, and then to use the best judgment in terms of self-monitoring. Every employee will be overviewed for potentially symptomatic issues that would suggest that there could be COVID. They will have to self-diagnose every day, and self-diagnosis really going through this list to say, am I exhibiting these symptoms? And then we'll have to work with the employee if there are any questions. So if a person were to have a cold and their temperature were to drop and they were to not exhibit these other symptoms, then potentially they should be able to come right back to work. It's only if they test positive for COVID they would have to, or they've had close exposure to someone who's tested positive for COVID, that they would have to then not return to work immediately. Did I, did I bungle any of that, Chris?
So not everybody goes to the doctor for, got 100-degree temperature, you stay home, you feel better next day. If that's the case, do they have to get tested to come back to work within 10 days, is my question? And then if they are required to stay home, how does that affect their leave balance?
Right, so each individual's certain situation is different, okay? And so some employees may qualify for the extended sick leave availability, you know, the 10, 10 days, 80 hours of pay, but we're, we're looking at that on a case-by-case basis. And so part of the rapid response team's obligation is as principals, as directors are notified of individuals in their particular area who may have been exposed or who are testing positive, they are letting the rapid response team know so that we can look at each individual's situation and provide consistent guidance throughout the district. And so, you know, I think anybody can look at any one of these symptoms, and I may have a cough one day, but it could be allergy-related, it's very common in this part of the country. And so I think you have to really look at the totality of these symptoms to see and not just cherry pick one symptom or another. As Dr. Morrison said, each employee is going to sign up and have that statement that they have to self-perform their check before they come to work each day. So they should start to become very familiar with their normal patterns and what is normal and what is not. And so obviously, if somebody sees something that's abnormal, that is on their symptom list, we would prefer that they take the safe route and make that decision to stay home if necessary and continue to accommodate those scenarios. But it's very hard to just give a blanket answer that's going to cover every different scenario, and so.
The leave is complicated by how much leave does the employee have? Is the employee asking for the leave for themselves or because of another medical situation in the home? What type of leave? Is it definitively a COVID situation, or is it some other aspect of, you know, being compromised because of other medical issues and, and issues with COVID? So it's, we today went through about 15 different cases that have already been brought to us in terms of questions that employees have had, and, you know, that's why this COVID Rapid Response Team we meet every day. We first looked at our own board policies as the first source of truth, then we look at TEA guidelines, CDC guidelines, regulations, and then if we're totally still not getting the answers that we think we need to, then we contact our legal representation and ask for direction there. So it's, there's nothing about it that is textbook. Every situation will present different answers, and again- And again, all I can tell you is the thing that will always guide us is what is in the best issue of safety for our employees and our students.
Let me ask a question, Chris. So, if I'm hearing you right, whether you've been exposed to COVID, or you have COVID, tested positive for it, it really doesn't matter until September the 8th. If everybody's online until September the 8th, other than the people that, the students that we talked about as an exception, if they have, if they have, if they're positive for COVID on August the 7th, that doesn't matter, really, they're still at home.
It does matter, because we are, even though the kids may not report till September the 8th in person, our employees are reporting to work, okay? And so, they are on campus, performing their duties. And so, that's why it is important for every employee to monitor their own health each and every...
I was talking about the kids. Okay, you're right, you're exactly right, and I didn't specify that.
And, you know, the students will, you know, as we start bringing kindergarten, pre-K, 6th grade, 9th grade, at various times, you know, we will, we will start to see how those situations impact.
Do we anticipate in the post-September 8th, or September 13th, no, what is it?
September 8th.
September 8th. In that time, in that post-September 8th timeframe, do we anticipate having both online and in-class? And that's a fluid situation that we've been talking about earlier. My question would be, if I'm a father, and I get two letters that say, "Two kids in that school, in that class, tested positive," or were, you know, displaying the traits, and I said, "Son, I just want you to stay at home today," even though he's well as can be, can he just go home and take his class on computer?
Yeah, so, if you remember...
So, he doesn't miss a class, even though he's gone a couple of days, he doesn't miss a day of class?
So, 81% of our parents right now, or 81% of parents covering, 81% of our students are saying that on September 8th, their desire would be to access in-person traditional learning.
Right.
And so, that's what we're preparing for, that's what we want to make sure we're doing a phenomenal job of, and to do it safely and to do it well. I think what's going to really require all of us to do is to be able to think out of the box and be agile and nimble.
Right.
And so, one of the things that is going to be, I think, something that's going to help us be a better school district is the remote instruction. You heard Mr. McFadden talk about the emphasis of really making sure we're learning how to do that well and during, right? So that if, if any situation where we were ordered to by the prerequisite authority that we had to shut down campuses or schools, or if we had to send a group of students home, or if a parent were to choose because of safety issues to want to access remote learning, we will be already doing that at the same time as we're doing traditional in-person, so we'll be able to accommodate that. And we'll be able to do it in a variety of ways, synchronous and asynchronous. So, it's making everyone think out of the box. If you see your teachers over the next couple of weeks, thank them over and over and over again, because, as I said to our staff, really, we're having four returns to school, you know? And it's usually complicated enough, at this time of the year, we're all sweating bullets as staff, we're trying not to let you know we're sweating, but we're all sweating bullets trying to make sure we're getting 9,100 students safely back to 10 campuses. In this world, it's having two back-to-schools on August the 13th, another back-to-school the third week of August when we're bringing back 6th and 9th graders, and then a whole other return to school on September the 8th. And we have to do each flawlessly and exceptionally well. So, nimble, agile, and flexible are going to be the key words of the day.
Thanks. So, I had a couple of questions. I thought David was going here, because as the attorney, I was thinking, "Oh, thank you, David, for bringing that up," but you didn't go there. The question I had was around really two things. One is, are we going to ask teachers and students to provide waivers, COVID waivers, you know, for the district? This is question number one. And the second question is, are they, so, bringing up the question about if they had COVID before school, you know, once they get into school after September 8th, we can kind of monitor them because they're going to be in the school, but we don't know what happened before September 8th. So, they could conceivably have gotten COVID the day before. Are they going to, are we going to ask them to sign something, or something like that, saying that they haven't had COVID within the last 10 days, or diagnosed with COVID within the last days, so they can come back to school on September 8th?
So, let's start off with the first question, then Sonya, I might ask you to come on with the, with the response to the second. So, on the first issue, there has been some conversation about waivers, and we have checked with our, with our legal firm, and really, the waiver has no actual ability to be enforced. And so, what it does is, it does a good job of overviewing, self-monitoring, both for staff and students. But in terms of especially students, there is no binding aspect to it. So, then the question comes, do you do all the paperwork and try to get 9,100 signatures, or do we just do a really good job of working with our families and communicating the symptoms and communicating the expectations for self-monitoring as families send their kids back to school? We do have a letter that we're overview with our staff. It's a little bit different for staff, because with staff, there is a legal requirement that they share with us. Any symptoms that they may be showing there, coming onto campus, or their place of work is an affirmation that they are informing us that they are under no circumstances exhibiting these symptoms, or that they do not knowingly know that they have tested or are currently exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19. And so, by virtue of their showing up at work, we will take them at the word that they've done the appropriate self-monitoring, and that they believe themselves to be free of COVID symptoms. Now, that doesn't mean they're COVID-free. I think the crazy thing is when you've talked to someone, and I actually was talking to someone today who had, who did not know that they had tested positive, or did not know they had COVID, until they actually went in for another health issue and said, "Well, you may as well test if I had the antibodies," and found out that they had a mild case of COVID about two months ago. So, this is just a different world, and we are reacting to it. I think the second question, Sonya, would you like to share some information on that? As you take off your face masks.
So, I think the second question was, how would you monitor if students are, I mean, that our employees are completing this attestation form, so that we know that they're healthy when they come into work? And that could be a paperwork nightmare with all of our employees, but this is the digitization of our personal workers that we've been undergoing this past year, this form, and employees have been busy all day creating and making sure that it's all, that it's going to go very smoothly tomorrow morning as all of our employees return. It will go straight to their email accounts that they're already logged into, form a remote, they'll be able to read, self-assess, they'll know that they'll be responsible for that each and every day before they walk onto our campuses. So, they'll know that's their responsibility, and that form will be signed, submitted electronically, and go into their personnel office tomorrow. It will also allow us a seamless way of being able to, as we do these 3 o'clock meetings and every other day, whenever that changes, we'll be able to change that, shoot it back out again, so that we can spend our time, thank you.
So, are we going to ask students, as they come back to school, if they have been a similar attestation kind of thing?
We're not going to ask them to sign anything, but at each campus, there will be discussions about coming healthy, the symptoms, and making sure that if any student is exhibiting those, we've actually had to separate the traditional nurses' station from having an isolation center, because there's a lot of students that still need to go to the nurse for all the things that we have nurses on our campuses for, and we need to make sure that if we are having to isolate because a student may be exhibiting some of these symptoms, that we have a place to station those students, keep them safe, but keep them isolated from other students, so if in fact, they were to have COVID, they're not exposing other students, so. But there's just going to be a lot of communication, a lot of sharing with our public, new information as we learn it, and changing of guidelines, because here's the challenging thing, even if there were a form, everything, we actually, we sent out that attestation form today for our employees, and I think it was Wendy about an hour after when you had sent it?
It wasn't even an hour.
Yeah.
It wasn't even an hour.
Wendy sent an email to all the principals saying, "Just got new guidance from TEA, we'll be resending the latest attestation form to you for tomorrow." So, it's just the world that we're living, and again, I'm going to say it again, over and over again, flexible, agile, and just think out of the box.
I actually want to offer a thank you, Dr. Morrison. You spoke with the board members this weekend, and I believe this that we're seeing right now, went up on the website yesterday, at least judging by the phone calls that I've started getting, it's probably, you know, went up yesterday. And I sat down and read this, and I had a lot of these questions that the board members have asked, and the administration have shared, and I think it's really well done. I think it's very, you know, it answers questions like, what's going to happen when a kid in my son, or child's class comes back with a positive? What are we going to do? And so, I think we've covered the vast majority of what we can plan. I may be speaking, I'm only speaking for one person, but I just want to say thank you.
The credit really belongs to our senior leadership and the principals, and our principals reaching out and having their conversations with faculty, employees, parents, and so, every time a situation comes up, we're able to really come together and have those conversations, and quickly get to what we think is the most appropriate, best answer. And, you know, I have a saying, I'm probably going to bore you guys with how much I'll say it, but we can either go for the easy no, or the harder yes. And the easy no would have just been, hey, we presented a plan to the board, and we're not going to have any students come back until September 8th, and that would have been easy. But that's not what we chose to do, and so, the fact that we're going to be welcoming a sizable number of students back to campus, it's going to be an opportunity for campus principals to say, "Okay, we think we've laid out the cafeteria just right, the media center, the classrooms." And then, when they actually have a small number of students, but a sizable number of students on each campus, they're going to see it happen in real time. We had a meeting with our principals yesterday, and there was something I hadn't been thinking about, and I'm kicking myself for it, because I was a high school principal. But I saw a school district that had opened last week, and what happens is all the high school kids that can drive, drive into the parking lot, and what do they all do? They get other cars and start hugging each other, and tackling each other, and there's no definition of close contact. And so, the first thing I said to the high school principals, "What's our, what's our parking lot plan?" Because, you know, right before the student even enters, and we can start reminding them about this new world of education and COVID, there's going to be situations that we just have to be on pop-up. And, but again, this staff, our principals, other leaders across the district have been phenomenal, and there's been a lot of hours, and there will continue to be a lot of hours. And Ms. Busby deserves an amazing amount of credit, because as soon as it goes on the website, I promise you, it's her leadership and her servant leadership.
Along those lines, Dr. Morrison, we're going to put some kiddos on a bus to get here, and I'm assuming transportation will kick up when we do these phased-in things. Are there protocols we have in place for bus drivers to do any sort of screening or anything like that?
Yeah, there's a training that will happen with bus drivers, there's new cleaning protocols. Was talking to Mr. Morris recently about zigzagging how students are seated. Right now, there are no restrictions coming from TEA about how many students can be on a bus. And so, one of the things that's going to be challenging, but, you know, it's the challenge that we're welcoming, is once we officially find out how many students will be returning, how many students will need buses, we will be doing bus routes later than we've ever done them before, but then, you know, we're trying to adjust, so that if some buses have more students than others, can we do some things with routes? So, we're just going to have to figure it out, but there will be protocols, there will be training. Mr. Lynn, do we have the masks, the shields?
Yes.
Can you get them? Do you have them with you?
Yeah.
Yeah. We have some PPE that was provided to us by the state, and so, there are masks that absolutely meet the guidelines that are required for safety by our teachers and for our students. Some of you have been asking me about, you know, well, how, I mean, we know, it's very uncomfortable to be up here trying to talk with a mask, and so, one of the things that a number of our campuses and their conversations with teachers said is, "What about shields?" And so, we do have shields that we just got from TEA, but those shields are, they're adequate, but there's actually some shields that we think will be much better for our teachers that have kind of goggles that make it easier, so that then the students can see the teacher's face, and it's much more comfortable for the teacher to be able to do their communications. And so, some teachers will choose to have the masks, some teachers can choose to have the shields coming from TEA. We ordered these shields that seem to be the preference by our educators, and some teachers will choose to have the mask and one of the shields. But bus drivers also will be able to have those same protocols as well.
All right, so, the last question I have is one that our public comment from Ms. Hagan spurred, and in our phased-in approach, and I don't want to put you on the spot, so be sure to tell me, just shut up if you need to, so. One of the, one of the groups that we didn't have on there was, you know, families who maybe can't get their kids to school, or can't leave them at home because of work, and is there anything we're doing for that kind of situation, or we're just kind of stuck?
Yeah, you know, I completely understand the issues around parents who, you know, really need us not only to provide a quality, first-class, world-class education for their child, but, you know, the impact that has on their work schedules. For students who do not have connectivity or device, we not only will provide an opportunity for them to access their school computer labs, but we will also provide transportation. Right now, it's a very small number, so as you heard Ms. Busby talk about the survey, I think it was 374 students that we currently knew of that were telling us they didn't have a device and don't have connectivity. We have been contacting them to see if they would want to come in for a half a day to use our computer facilities, and be provided lunch, and also provide transportation. So, we're doing AM and a PM session based on need. Right now, the plans would be to have those at each campus. If those remain fairly small, we might choose a satellite situation, but we are still trying to reach out to over, well, about a third of our students who were not represented in that first survey to see, you know, do they have connectivity, do they have a device, or they need an alternate pathway? What's interesting is we actually thought that there would be more students who said they don't have connectivity or devices that would want to be able to come into school, but right now, those numbers are pretty small, most campuses, 8 to 15. But for those two, the students who are saying that they don't have connectivity or devices, we will provide transportation. And you should be very proud of your transportation department, because both when Ms. Berg started talking about bringing more special education students, when we started talking about the phased-in approach, and we started about the logistics of AB students and bringing them for partial days, their responses was, "Tell us what we need to do, and we're going to, we're going to get it done." So, could not ask for a better servant leadership mindset than our transportation department.
Can I ask, the notification that you send out, this close contact, is this a letter and an email, or?
So, Wendy, Ms. Graves, if I can ask for your assistance here, because I want to make sure we're speaking the latest guidance coming from our principals, but the question was, the communication that's going out to our parents, both those who have been in close contact, informing them that their child has been in close contact, and those we simply are indicating that there was a positive COVID case, whether it was an employee or a student.
Yes.
The goal would be that it is, the communication is a phone call, we think that is, or email, much, much faster and much more personal, because we know that's going to come with a lot of concerns and a lot of questions. We actually want to be able to help script that for our, for our employees, because there's going to be questions, quite frankly, that we're not going to have the answers to. So, we want to give the right information as quickly as possible, and then, there will be a letter that will go to all parents of students at that campus to say, "There was a positive COVID case, whether it was an employee or a student, but you would have been contacted if in fact, your child was in close contact with that employee or that student."
Yes, that is right. We will send an email. Our number-one priority will be to call. Sometimes, it's going to be difficult to stay ahead of that with everything that we're asking our teachers to do. We will email it out, we will send home copies, but, you know...
And I'm listening, I'm listening to Wendy, and this is such a team effort to figure out...
out exactly how we're getting these responses, and Duane's like, remember, we have School Messenger. Remember, we have the parent notification system, we have this phone call, we have this email, but even a quick text to our parents to say, check your email, because, you know, you're, you can only send a short text, and it's 160 characters in School Messenger, but I can tell you, hey, there's an important notification for you to check your email.
Yes, and the teacher can do that just to their class, it doesn't have to go out to the whole.
I was just thinking of the ones that didn't have connectivity, how are they going to get this?
Well, we're.
And we will do the paper. I mean, we kind of now have an idea of the students that we really need to focus on with paper, that haven't been responding or do not have the connectivity. So we'll do, we will communicate as many ways as possible to make sure that they're kept informed of what's going on inside the classroom.
And I, one thing that I constantly am reminded of in my visits to school campuses and asking some of these same questions, even though there's a sizable number of our students who don't have connectivity and probably a larger chunk that don't have quality connectivity, and when multiple devices are being used on, at the home, the connectivity that even parents will say are pretty good dramatically goes down, as we all know, a mom and dad are working. Most of our families do have cell phones, and so even though they don't have connectivity at home, that really is conducive for the type of work that we're asking of, you know, they do have a cell phone, there is some way that we can do rapid communication. We're going to always try to make sure that in communicating this, and I'd like to be able to say if, you know, it's more likely that at some point we'd be making these communications, that we do it with care and we do it with a lot of compassion, because these are challenging phone calls to do, they're even harder as a parent to receive, and we're going to try to give the best information we have, but that's going to come after an investigation, trying to determine close contact, and it's entirely possible that we're going to have missed some, because, you know, it's very natural, like at the letter that says, my student wasn't exposed, the first question I'm going to have for my child is, okay, now they're not going to know, because we still have student privacy, but in a small community, you're going to find out pretty quickly, and so questions will start to be asked. And if, and if any parent were to think that perhaps there was close contact, please contact the school right away and let us do that due diligence and investigation, and then we'll give you the best information we can. And then that will allow a parent to make smart, rapid medical decisions for their families.
All the planning put into this is, makes sense. What's our exit strategy? When do we stop doing this?
Wow, that's a great question. I think, I shared this with the principals, because I just needed a moment, because you start to go home at night and you can't shut your brain off thinking about, well, what if this happened, what if that happened, have we done this, that we, and I was watching Roger Goodell, the commissioner of the NFL, now here's a billion-dollar company that can bring the brightest minds to any issue that they have, and there's billions of reasons why they want to get it right, and they only have to do it for 16 times, right? We're doing it over 180 days. So he made this comment that he was going into their kind of COVID rapid response for the NFL, and he said, I walked into a meeting with five questions, and I walked out with, he said, I walked into the meeting looking for five answers, and I came out with 30 questions. And that's our daily, that's just how we're experiencing this. I think what's the end game? When we have vaccines that really work, when we have exposure to rapid testing so that you're not having to wait as long to get results and testing is more available, this will get easier, but, you know, I think this is going to be with us for quite a while. And so we're just have to respond to it as it exists, we'll get guidance from TEA in terms of things we are allowed to start easing off of and things that we're not. We have a lot of opportunities as a local governance board to make decisions, and that's really where the decision should be made, when at all possible. We will never do anything to compromise the safety of our students and our staff, but I think we're going to be living this for a while. Now, that doesn't mean it has to always be a negative, it's just, you know, we've learned to live with some things sometimes that present challenges, but until there's a true vaccine that we know is completely safe and testing is much more accessible and much more accurate, we're just going to have to problem-solve for this for the foreseeable future, but not be paralyzed by it. So, did you have a question, Mr.?
Oh, I was just going to ask the board if they had any other questions for you. I did want to say, again, echoing what Matt was saying, thank you to the staff, really appreciate all your hard work over these last couple of weeks, and thank you, Dr. Morrison, for your first official meeting at MISD. Good job on that. The one thing I was going to say is, you know, as I was thinking through this, this not soft opening, is that this is what I hope that we can continue to try to do as a district, because we're not following what everybody else is doing, we're thinking for ourselves and trying to be leaders. You know, in the past, we've kind of gathered, you know, we try to understand, and we're kind of, we've been following. And this is really innovative thinking, so I appreciate that, for the staff too, and anyways, I like being a leader and, you know.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lynn, and just, I think board meetings are really important to communicate, and you have a board that has been really focused on making sure that we, our default is returning our students to school, and we're pivoting where we need to, and again, safety of our students and staff is always going to be the priority. Just as a reminder, because we've been giving you a lot of surveys as a committee, and we apologize for that. We do have one last survey, and it is critically important, so we wanted to give a little wrap-up to our presentation tonight. And as a reminder, we will be starting back to school on August the 13th, and we are excited about remote learning, and I think it's something I share with the principals. You know, sometimes you feel a little bit sad for yourself, and you want to have those little ones right in front of you, but our teachers are great, our employees are great, our leaders are great about, look, this is school in 2020, 2021, and we're still excited. And there's going to be a lot of joy, even if it's going to be remotely, to welcome our students back on the 13th and 14th. On August the 17th, we're going to be very excited, though, to have the first of our phased openings where we will be welcoming back our pre-K and our kindergarten and our special education students who are accessing an alternative curriculum, and that will be very exciting to be able to program for those students. And that will be pre-K through 12th grade with the special education students. On August the 31st, we will be welcoming our 6th grade and our 9th grade students. And again, that is, when you think about the trepidation that our 6th graders and 9th graders come to school with, they will have the campus to themselves, they will have a full week to get immersed in those secondary experiences, and so when we bring back all of our students, hopefully, they will be more comfortable and be ready to thrive. And then September the 8th is the big day, and that is what we're focused on, where we are offering our community the opportunity to choose in-person, traditional, face-to-face learning, or if they choose to continue remote, and we want to make sure that people don't feel like remote is not going to be a viable choice. We are super focused on making it an effective instructional opportunity for parents who choose it for reasons that are very important to them. And what will be really helpful for us are the surveys that will go out, and I promise we're trying to be this, the last survey that we send for a while, but this is probably the most important. The surveys that will go out starting the 19th, and we'll continue to send them out through the 25th, that's where parents will be able to choose for their child, their desire for traditional in-person learning or continue with remote. And it's very important that we get as close to 100% on that as possible, because that's how we will program for scheduling, that's how we're programmed for continued safety protocols at our schools, that's how we're programmed for the buses, cafeteria. We want to get it right for your child, so we realize with all of the need for information that we've had, there is a little bit of survey fatigue, but we're going to ask for your patience and your indulgence one final time. Please tell your neighbors, your colleagues, your coworkers, please fill out these surveys, and then we're going to do the very best for your child. But those surveys will go out the 19th, and that will conclude the 25th, and then we'll welcome our students back to campus on September the 8th, as many as choose to access that.
So, first of all, I have to say, I firmly count myself, my kids would count themselves in the 81% that say, let's get back to face-to-face. Anything we can do to do that is great. That being said, there's 19% that are other, if you will, or not responded. So with the Attorney General stating that the local health authority does not have the power to make the decisions on shutting down the school, outside the governor saying, hey, your school is shut down, is the district looking at internal metrics, you know, daily COVID count cases, is there a red line that gets hit anywhere leading up to September 8th that MISD says, whoa?
Yeah, you know, so I have lots of.
Not to be Debbie Downer.
I have lots of sayings, and you've got to hear all of them over a long period of time. One of them is, you know, sometimes your heart says go, and your head needs to say, whoa. We want to get back to school. I listened to our educator come in front of us tonight, and I was nodding my head, and we're not allowed to say anything, but I was nodding my head, and that's been so many of the conversations I've had since becoming part of this school district, is hearing about the desire to welcome our kids back to campus. So there is no lack of that wanting to be how we deliver instruction. I do want to be clear, for those parents that choose, for all the reasons that are personal to them, to continue remote, we want to make that a phenomenal experience, and our focus is not only to make it better than it was in the spring, but a quality learning experience, and everything from the synchronous and asynchronous plans to class lengths, to everything we can do to make it better, we are dedicated to do. Your question is, what would cause us not to come back on September the 8th? And certainly at this point, I think the only thing that would happen would be the governor giving an order to say that we can't come back. But I will say this, you know, the number-one obligation as your superintendent that I never ever want to falter on is the safety of our students and staff. And if in collaboration with our local health officials, with local leaders, and with the seven of you, if we were looking at data and we were having a rapid expansion of COVID cases amongst citizens here in Montgomery County and our ISD community, if we were finding that there are a plethora of students contracting COVID and teachers contracting COVID, and if we just felt like we could not program to keep our students and staff safe, then yes, there's a scenario where I would say, I think we need to delay. But, you know, I think that if we are doing this right, and everything that we're doing with the COVID Rapid Response Team, all the planning, the phased-in, and actually, COVID cases in the area are, active COVID cases are under decline, if we do this well, we do it right, our goal is on September 8th, open up the doors to 10 campuses, welcome back all the students that parents say they want us to be teaching traditional in-person instruction. So I don't want to say never, but our goal is to be back in school for those who choose it on September the 8th.
Anything else from the board? Well, thank you again, Dr. Morrison, and thank you, staff. With that, I think that we are done. So with that, we're going to go ahead and close tonight's meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.